All right, good evening everyone. I'm going to call the Tuesday, September 8th, 2024 Commissioners Meeting and it's got order. First item on the agenda this evening is to present a vacation and pledge of allegiance this evening for your portions to have packs of 10 rocks in here from Mount Zion Church. Any great? Can you move back a little more, sir?
Let us pray. Almighty God, we thank you so much that we can approach you this night and come into your presence. You are the great God whom we call by many names and we are here tonight seeking your wisdom, your wisdom to be poured out upon the commissioners and all the decisions that have to be made for the county, for the residents, and all the issues that have to be considered. We ask that you may provide the guidance for each and every one of us here in this room and the guidance that will affect the lives of many from within Currituck County. We appreciate coming to you and being able to call upon you this night. And many of us ask this in the name of Jesus our Lord, amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, thank you for coming out this evening. All right, um, we need to do approval of the agenda. We do have to make a change to the agenda this evening. I'm going to move to add a closed session after we adjourn from our Ocean Sands Water Sewer District Board.
Make a motion.
Second, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Um, next item on the agenda is a public comment. I will remind everyone when you come up to the mic this evening to just state your name and address for the, uh, for the record, please. We had some people signed up. Ms. Linda Garzanski.
Uh, I will see my time to the next paper.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Jim McGreen.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Gemma Green and I reside at 758 Seamus Court. My husband and I have owned this property in Ocean Sands, Section N, since 1983. We built our home there in 1993 and we've been permanent residents there for the past eight years. Um, I'm one of the newer members of the Advisory Board for the Ocean Sands North Crown Point Watershed Improvement Service District. And, um, I realize you heard, um, almost an hour's worth of, um, the position that we take concerning the storm water, but I did want to, as a new member, add my support to the other members that already talked to you about this. And so I, I, I may repeat some of the things that they said, but, um, hopefully in my own words, um, during the 37 years we've been Ocean Sands property owners, um, we've been personally fortunate because our property has never flooded. But however, over that same time period, we've seen our neighbors get flooded over and over. And, um, just since last September, when Hurricane Dorian struck, um, the storms after that, we had flooding. We had flooding again, um, several times over the past year, five times to be exact. Um, I've kept track of them. Um, there was flooding on February 6th, Hurricane Arthur again on May 16th. There was flooding again on May 28th this year and then June 17th. And then I don't know if it was good or bad, but we had a sort of long drought period after that. But that was five times in just one year. Um, and unfortunately, um, according to our scientific-based meteorology, the trend of flooding storms will continue in the future and may in fact become worse. The flooding episodes in Ocean Sands not only cause monetary damages, as you heard, but they raise real concerns regarding health issues related to standing water, which Linda did go through. Another example is definitely, um, the longer that water stands, the more time mosquitoes have to breed and God knows, they carry enough disease themselves. I really ask the question, where do the homeowners in Ocean Sands, um, many of whom are like, my husband and I were retirees, were on a fixed income. Um, we are living in what we thought was our dream home, but we see this flooding happening all around us. Along with the other members of the Advisory Board, we believe there's a solution to the flooding problems in Ocean Sands and it's in your hands to help us solve it. Um, as you know, I already mentioned in 19, in 2018, um, the Advisory Board engaged Albermore and Associates to conduct a survey and devise a recommendation. And as you know, they came up with this groundwatering lowering system. It actually utilizes a very small portion of these open spaces. Eric mentioned some, you know, the size of these pumping stations. It's something like seven acres out of, um, a hundred and some acres of open space. So it is very small portion. And, um, I know you're aware that the open spaces were, as I understand it, created as part of the 1987 settlement agreement with the Ocean Sands PUD and the county, which they reached with our developer, um, James Johnson. And the open spaces are really not open for development. They don't carry any monetary value. Um, and that was verified as, that was also mentioned by the June, um, 2020 appraisal that was conducted by Foreign Appraisal Services. And as I understand it, in the PUD that was agreed to in 1987, I guess I can go back, the same as Mr. Johnson, um, that it states that the only use of these open spaces are supposed to be for the benefit of the occupants of Ocean Sands. And frankly, I can't think of a more appropriate use of those open spaces than a flood mitigation system. So I do ask that you consider this. I know you said that you've heard from Mr. Johnson and he seems reasonable. I hope that's true. Um, I know we have seen different things that he has done in the past and, um, you worry about that kind of thing. So I do hope that you, you know, it is actually holding these open spaces as almost as hostages and demanding a ransom, um, from us all to, uh, you know, the use of it, something that's supposed to be for our benefit. So I do add my support to the rest of the members of the Advisory Board that you really think about this and, and help us help ourselves. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Um, I don't have anyone else sign up this evening. Is there anyone else that would like to come up and speak to anything this evening? All right, seeing no one, I will close the public comment and, uh, move on to the Commissioners' Report. I'll, uh, kick that off tonight. Um, got an email today and I'm talking about this fall on the Outer Banks and as we're on the OBX topic. Um, as, as most of the people know, that, that Corolla is going to be busy this year. We've known that, but, um, um, the person we got the email from said that their occupancy, it's a rental company, uh, they're up a hundred percent over last year for September. Um, so we'll see lots of people there, I guess, continuing. And they're seeing, uh, much bigger numbers in October than ever before as well. So, um, I expect that will change even further and carry into November. I'm sure for folks that have been here for a while, um, we've seen more and more owners coming down, more and more rentals taking place over Thanksgiving through Christmas and New Years. Um, so Commissioner Beaumont and I were talking about that today, that, you know, it, depending on how many of those are owners coming in and not necessarily renters, how do we figure out what does that mean to us financially? You know, going forward, if the Outer Banks changes, uh, to some degree, and we have more permanent residents there, we lose the OCTAX, sales tax generation changes a little bit, what does that look like? And it's almost, uh, I think you said like a dry run, um, but, you know, quantifying that is, is the harder part of it. So it'll be interesting to see where our numbers come in, um, after the sales tax settles down and OCTAX and, uh, the things of that nature, uh, when those get reported later in the year. Um, to our folks on Knott's Island, uh, we have something on the agenda tonight, a resolution, um, in support of getting the ferry back open again. Um, myself, several of the board members have had a lot of discussion, both at our county manager level and with Bobby Hanig, um, who represents us in the North Carolina House, and Senator Steinberg that represents us in the North Carolina Senate. They are, uh, very much on our side and are working very hard to reestablish that service. As we understand it, um, it's pretty much the only ferry not running. Um, if anybody's listening tonight, I'll be making a post shortly on the Knott's Island Facebook page. And just, uh, give you some information on who to contact. It doesn't hurt at all to have the citizens reach out from the affected areas, even on the mainland, if you have family on Knott's Island and you use that ferry service. If you live on Knott's Island and you come back over, the state needs to have a face put to the dollar amount that they're going to spend. As far as what the state spends on transportation, it's under a half million to operate that ferry, generally speaking, without any major repairs. It's a drop in the bucket compared to their normal budgeting. Um, of course, the state has, um, put the kibosh on a lot of their funding because they were overspending their budget. So, uh, we're going to hear that as an excuse for a lot of stuff, but it's a small enough amount for them, um, that I think they could, there is a way for them to get it open, at least partially, to allow service to be restored in some degree to the folks at Knott's Island because it's not just about the kids. There's a lot more to it than that. Uh, and Corolla, uh, switch back to Corolla. Commissioner Beaumont, um, brought this to our attention actually after speaking to lifeguards, but, uh, we recently, um, did a budget resolution to, uh, extend the lifeguard service there to some degree. We can't keep all the lifeguards, they go back to college, at least where they can go back to college. So, uh, so, um, we've done that. So you'll notice more lifeguard stands staying up this weekend through September as we recognize there's more people here. Um, if you're in the four-wheel-drive area, um, today was the end of the driving lane traffic flip that we do during the summertime and the end as well to having the parking passes out there. We did extend the sheriff's departments. We asked them, we gave them more money for overtime to have more deputies out there recognizing that the traffic's going to be there, more people are going to be here. Um, so they'll be there to assist in any way, shape, or form they can. We did have some sheriff's deputies grab up the, um, traffic lane signs this morning and put them out because they've been doing that for the last 90 days and didn't really think about it. So they stuck them back out there, then someone realized it was the end of that season, so they went and scooped them back up. So there has been some rumor floating around on Facebook and I've gotten several calls and emails about it. Um, we are not extending the traffic lane or the parking pass or any of that. So it's kind of back to business as usual, as you will, um, for the four-wheel-drive area. Um, and with that, we'll pass it on to our wonderful Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first off, as I said on the Albermore Regional Health Board, I just want to provide an update as of today. Uh, Currituck County has reported cases of 122. Um, the active cases are at 29 and a, a big spike from that was just a recent increase at the Currituck House. Um, but of those, uh, the total 122, 93 have recovered. And the big number that's, that I'd like to see here for us is Currituck County has had zero deaths. And we're only one of a couple of counties in, in the state of North Carolina that has zero deaths from the coronavirus, which is, um, something to be thankful for, um, as we get through this. But as a state level, we're starting to see trends slightly decrease, which is a good sign as well. So I, I constantly get updates, I pass them on to the other board members and we kind of keep track of this at a local level. Um, next, I just wanted to, um, just say thank you for our first responders out there. They've been active here lately with fires, structured fires, a lot of accidents on the roads this summer, but also there's been a lot of water rescues that, um, they've been helping the sheriff and other agencies, um, handle this summer. So, um, your first responders out there, if you see them, thank them. If you can get involved, become a volunteer in some aspect to help out in any way you can, they would appreciate that. It's been very active this summer in all aspects. So just thank them if you can. If you can get involved, please get involved. Um, and with that, I think I'm going to turn it over to, on next question.
Commissioner Etheridge.
Thank you. In three days, it will be 19 years since the 9/11 attack, which became the, uh, single deadliest terrorist attack in human history. It was the deadliest event also for firefighters as well as law enforcement officers in the United States. The New York City Fire Department lost 343 people. The police officers who died were 23 and the Port Authority had 37 who lost their lives. We all need to remember that it's always the first responders who run towards danger and it just breaks my heart to see some of the things that are going on in our county, not in our county, in our country. And I too like our Vice Chair, Mr. Payment, make sure you thank these people. They're the ones who are out there at the front line and we're just so thankful for the people we have here in Currituck who are just always running towards danger and think nothing of it. And we need to always remember them. Thank you.
Commissioner Beaumont.
Um, two things tonight, Mr. Chairman. The first one, and please don't let me say this incorrectly, uh, we did, uh, kind of piggybacking on Department of Transportation, uh, the bridge funding has been slid, has been slid two years down the road due to no funds available. Um, at, at initial glance, uh, it's easy to, you know, be concerned about that. The reality is that, that slide was going to occur regardless due to the lawsuits that have to be mitigated and taken care of. Um, that was number one. And then number two, um, our community lost, uh, an individual, Mr. Frank Flora. And, um, what an inspiration he and his wife have been to me, two elderly residents of our county, that they came to every single commissioner meeting, almost, you know, without fail. And, uh, Frank passed away and, and our community is, is a little lesser because of it. So, um, um, anyway, just keep, uh, Doris in your prayers and, and their family. Um, he was, he was quite an individual and sad to see him go, but he's in a better place and that's what really counts. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McCourt.
Um, piggybacking on with, uh, with, um, as Pity said, 9/11, we have a, uh, it's not canceled, it's probably one of the only things that's not canceled due to COVID-19. Um, they have, uh, at Central Memorial Park, I don't have the specifics, I'm trying to look up on my other phone, but, uh, there's two of the guys on my shift at the Sheriff's Park and on the Honor Park. But we do have a ceremony, which I know David Twyper does a lot, um, for Twyper's funeral home at Central Memorial Park for 9/11. Everybody sitting here remembers where they were. I was in the BOP getting beat on with defensive tactics. And nobody will forget where they were on 9/11. Unfortunately, I think a lot of citizens have forgotten the page since 9/11, unfortunately. Um, main thing, uh, the beach, the beach has just been actually not really busy. I think I lived in Nine Beach two D days this year. Um, and it's, it's been busy for the most part, everything. The Ocean Rescue had so many water saves, I mean, those towns are phenomenal.
And zero?
Zero.
Zero fatalities?
Um, now I know we have, um, we've had boat saves, um, in the, in the Sound, they had a couple the other day. Uh, we've had, I mean, it's just been crazy, but it, it's busy and I think people were just tired of being in their house. So, um, kudos to Ocean Rescue, the Fire Department, EMS, the deputies, dispatch. This weekend, all our stuff went down and the phones just went crazy. And I feel so bad for those ladies and the couple males that work in there too. Um, you know, it's crazy busy. Our radio system wasn't working. Our computers weren't working because the internet wasn't working. So it was like working in like the, the early 2000s, it's kind of crazy. But, um, kudos to all those guys. Like I said, and dispatch always gets left off and, and they're phenomenal. We have some really good people in there. Kudos to them. Highway Patrol too, we don't have many of them here, but Highway Patrol, when I just found out last night, one of them's going to FTO school for a couple of weeks, so, uh, we'll have less. That'll be more rec reports that we'll be doing, but it's fine, we pick up their slack. Um, the county staff, you know, everything. Dr. Lutz is here, our new superintendent, um, great guy, been, you know, with the county for a while. I think he's going to do a phenomenal job as the, the next superintendent, um, for our schools. I'm just ready for kids to go to, I want to see the buses ride up and down the road. I want to park in a school zone and, and write somebody a speeding in the school zone ticket. I mean, they're very expensive, 438 bucks. But, um, you know, I mean, like I said, I'm just ready to see that and see the kids moving. And like I said, he, uh, I think he's the, the right guy. I'm glad they chose him. I've had multiple dealings with him when he was a principal and other things, uh, to the assistant. And, um, I think he's going to do a lot of great for Currituck. So congratulations, since he's here, I figured I'd recognize him. I beat you to that one, Beaumont. Um, like they said, uh, Mr. Flora, they were nice people, and Ms. Flora, they're just the sweetest people. Uh, they would, there was date night for them to come to the county, county commissioner meetings. And Ms. Flora, boy, she would let you have it and she still will today, but she's a sweet lady and Frank, what a nice guy. I've done probably five vehicle wrecks. They live right past Napa. I've done probably five vehicle wrecks in their front yard and it always gets tore up. And I just feel sick because they're such nice people. So condolences, um, to their family. And one more, um, a guy I went to high school with, he actually graduated, my, my sister and he actually worked for, um, Commissioner Owen Etheridge's son, Greg George. Condolences to his family, uh, his passing a couple of weeks ago. Be nice to people. One of the deputies the other day told me, you know, we, we talk about stuff and I hope the sheriff's not like, you know, sometimes we talk about stuff and you, you, you focus on the negative. If you watch the media, it's negative. If you watch social media, Owen's page, they beat people up all the time, but, um, on the internet. But just, uh, be positive. I, I, it's something new that we started last week and I'm trying and, and it's, you know, it's challenging to not chime in on something negative, but it's, you know, there's a lot of good. Our county, we got a lot of good people that live here. We got a lot of great staff and great everything and like the parking decals, immediately when I saw that on social media, I got a bunch of phone calls and I said, you know, you want us to raise your taxes to, to pay for people that don't dump trash here? Because that's what's going to happen. And, you know, they kind of got it then, but, you know, like you said, it's, it's easier to be nice than nasty. Social media's the devil. Um, the media's the devil too, but sometimes it's, well, that's pretty much it. So I think I hit it off.
You covered a lot of it. You covered a lot of it.
That's a hard act to follow.
You can just hang it up now, you got nothing on that.
I could just say ditto, ditto, ditto.
All right.
But I will say, um, you know, as bad as things have been in our country for the last six to seven months, we still have so much to be thankful for and realization that we are truly a blessed people to live not only in the United States of America, North Carolina, but more especially Currituck County. It's been mentioned here, Frank Flora, I've known Frank ever since I was about five or six years old because, um, he used to work at JJ Flora's and when we went hunting up there, up behind Moyoc, we'd always stop in there every Saturday morning and get our Vienna sausage and potted meat so we'd have something to eat that day. But Frank is, he was one of a kind and he was, um, he was just a good citizen. But folks, I, I had to testify in a trial up in Virginia last week. Um, and talking to the police officer, he said, people are just losing respect for law enforcement all around. He said, and I know Kevin would, would back this up, he says, you stop somebody down the road, you never know what you're facing. And he said, it's, it's a little daunting task to walk up to some of these vehicles for a police officer to fulfill his duties. And it's amazing now that everybody that was talking about defunding the police here two, three months ago, now suddenly are backtracking because we have to have structure. Uh, we just can't have a free and open society. You've got to have structure and our law enforcement provides that structure. So when you're driving up and down the highway and you see one of our deputies on the road, wave at them. Let them know that you, you're thinking about them. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We wave back too. We can't tell with the tint of windows, you guys.
Mine, mine are.
Mr. Jarvis.
Well, uh, much the same. Um, I was married and married to a former game warden. For 30 years, I heard how frenetic and busy Labor Day weekend always, always was. And this Labor Day weekend was no exception. Uh, there were boat rescues, um, there were structured fires, there were numerous accidents. And I just want to kind of chime in and say thank you to all of our first responders locally, uh, people who responded, citizens, the state agencies, including the Wildlife Resources Commission, I better name them or I'll never hear about it. Uh, and I just want to say thank you for their tireless efforts this weekend. And then to finish up, a congratulations to Dr. Lutz. Um, a shout out to our teachers and our faculty and staff and administration. This school year has been unlike any other and there's a steep learning curve for teachers. Um, they are juggling not only this virtual learning and trying to, uh, figure out how to juggle screen time so young, uh, students aren't online all the time. Uh, they're juggling their own children, other responsibilities. Uh, parents are having many of the same struggle. It's just a, a difficult time, uh, in the realm of public and even private education. And I ask that all people just practice grace. Um, you know, nobody has all the answers. Um, any answer you have is going to go contrary to somebody's belief. And I ask that you keep teachers and administrators and students and parents in your prayers because 2020 has not been easy for anybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I have a question for Dr. Lutz. Like last week, when the internet went down, does that count against the attendance days that they must go to school?
Uh, no. Each shut capabilities is still, uh, you know, taking their lesson and uploading it so kids can watch it later. And then we all said today, when the other half of the country went back to school and we had the same, Google had a lot of issues today since we added about 25 states to the president.
I was asked about that the other night.
We will not count it against kids. We're going to work with our families.
Thank you.
Very good. Anything else for the board? All right. Uh, so it seems like, uh, we, we owe our, uh, our first responders a very great debt of gratitude for what they do. We are very fortunate to live here in this county and it seems like Ms. Ford, the last time she was up here speaking to us was talking about volunteering for get involved and be part of your community. So, um...
She's not vaccinated, is she? She says she's not currently.
I'm sure. I wouldn't doubt it. All right. Um, thank you all. Uh, next item on the agenda this evening is the County Manager's Report. Mr. Stackwether.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to take the brief period tonight to discuss the solid waste decals that everybody seems to have a lot of questions about. Um, let's first start talking about where that came from in our budget meetings that we had, which feels like forever ago now, but was back in February. Uh, we had a discussion that solid waste fees are going up. Um, something will have to be done to offset the cost. Um, one of those things, there's only two ways to do that. One is to find cost savings. The other is to increase revenue and that means increasing the household availability fee. We discussed that there seem to be a lot of out-of-county users of our facilities, specifically commercial businesses, maybe that they reside maybe in Pasquattank, Camden, they work at the beach and as they come through, they're dropping either commercial or residential And as they come through, they're dropping either commercial or residential trash off at our, at our facility. So we, we wanted to try to think through a way to kind of curtail that so that it was just Currituck County, either residents who pay the household availability fee or people who live at the properties of those who pay the household availability fee. So we looked to other communities around us and, and it's, it's extremely common. Basically, it's a window cling. It's not a sticker. So let's start there. It doesn't leave a residue. It's just a, have a plastic film. You can move it from car to car. We decided that every, um, property tax bill would get two of them sent out. So if you have property in Currituck County, when your property tax bill comes in, you're going to get two of these window clings. If you've got six vehicles, you can move them between vehicles very easily. Um, they're not really large. If you need extras, you're more than happy to reach out to our Public Works Department. And they can, they can get you extras once we get them printed and, and circulation. Basically, when you go to one of our convenience sites, you will have to show this decal in order to be able to use it. This is going to cut down, like I said, on people from out of county using the facilities. The, um, the attendants at the sites will be the ones who are going to be responsible for enforcing that. We have a contract that they're already supposed to be enforcing, you know, that no out of county waste should come in. However, it's very difficult for them to do that. For those of you that have been to it when it's busy, if they stopped every person in there to look at, at an ID, especially at the one at Moyoc here lately, it seems like, I mean, traffic would back out all the way up to the highway. So this is a very easy way to see if people come in, they just look at the decal if they've got it, it's, it's in, it's get the trash thrown away. We've had questions about renters. Like I said, if you've got a, a valid lease on property in Currituck County, you're going to be able to get a decal for that purpose. The, the enforcement of that will actually start on January 1st. So we're giving plenty of time for folks to get their property tax bill. If they need to get extra decals, get them. These are going to go out periodically. It could be that this turns into more than just a decal though, for the solid waste convenience sites. It could be that it could be a decal for reentry for those folks who have property in the, uh, Outer Banks. It could end up being, right now, we also, um, have folks who come by and pick up beach parking passes. If you own property, it could be used for something like that. But right now, it's only for, going to be for the convenience sites. Um, and the discussion was trying to figure out, like I said, the best way to find some cost savings. We think we'll cut down the tonnage that we have to pay for to take to the landfill. And by doing that, it'll cut down on the costs that we have to pay. One of the other things that we discussed, and we're still working through a lot of this, we, and I still need to have discussions with the board about it, was changing, um, some of the things that might be accepted at the convenience sites. We didn't really get it narrowed all the way down. So I think that at some point in the work session, we'll have to have a conversation about what that looks like and if you all want to implement some changes there. We are also doing a rate study on all of our utilities and that includes solid waste. Because I mean, ultimately, it has to pay for itself. It's what's called an enterprise fund. So property taxes don't go to offset the cost of those services. The only exception being, uh, the ones that have curbside pickup in the Outer Banks pay a tax and the rollout, um, in the Wellhead Service District where they actually have, they roll the trash cans in and out during season. So, um, like I said, all of these services, they, they have to pay for themselves. It's, it's enterprise fund. And so the way that solid waste typically works is you don't fund that through, um, property taxes. It's funded to a, in this case, a household availability fee, which is a one-time flat rate that everybody pays when your tax bill comes in to cover the cost. And if, I mean, not, not trying to sound funny, everybody kind of, kind of, uh, thinks trash is, is, it's expensive or it's this or that either. But you think about all the trash that a household generates in the course of a year. And that, that, all you have to pay to get rid of it is that household availability fee. I mean, it is amazing if you really sit and think about it. We also make up some of the differences by charging for commercial waste that goes to our transfer station. And for those residents who have a lot of waste and can't use our convenience sites, if you have to use the transfer station, if it's residential trash, the first 500 pounds are free. So, yes, sir.
Speaking of the, when you said commercial construction, am I correct in this statement that any construction work, even if you're a company in Currituck County, you're supposed to be taking that debris to the, to the maple site and not using the open containers that are in the convenience sites? Because we're seeing a lot of that usage going on, which is increasing our, which is increasing the trucks coming in to empty those open containers, which is another cost that the county is incurring. So I think the convenience centers, we need to start reinforcing that with our commercial businesses as well.
Yeah. So all commercial businesses are supposed to take their waste to the transfer station because there is a fee associated with every pound that you have to throw away. Obviously, when you get onto what I'll, what I'll call household trash bags of trash, like, and I'll, I'll say that if I had a company vehicle and I picked my trash up from my house and I'm dropping it off, that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about, like you said, if you are a carpenter by trade and you've got a bunch of wood debris in the back of the truck, you should take that to the transfer station and pay for that poundage. And one of the things that we talked about, um, at our budget meetings was trying to figure out if that's something we want to look at changing is, is that construction demolition debris just has to go to the transfer station, no matter whether it's a company that generates it or a private citizen. The private citizen gets 500 pounds for free. The only difference is, let me back up. When I say that, obviously, Knott's Island and Corova are, are different animals because of just the distance for household waste. But, um, you know, but like I said, we, we're not finalizing any of that, but it is true. The rule right now is if you're a, if you have commercial waste, it should not be coming into our convenience sites. Because you don't, there is no fee on commercial businesses like the household availability fee. So essentially, if you are a commercial business and you are getting rid of, getting rid of waste in our convenience sites, you are being subsidized, your business is being subsidized by every taxpayer in this county. So I know, I think there's a lot of people, if they, if that'll click with them, it would make a difference and they'll realize, well, I don't want to do that. We just have some that still take advantage of it and that's why we have enforcement programs. So, um, and this will help with that, you know, a decal. So we've heard, we've heard this. There are several businesses who travel through our county to and from job sites and they actually use our convenience sites as.
It's convenient.
Yeah, it's, it's convenient. There you go. So, um, that's all I really have tonight. I know we had a lot of questions. If anybody has any questions, you can definitely refer them to our Public Information Officer. He'll be happy to answer any questions that, that folks have about the decal program. It's going to be an article in the focus that'll explain it a little more in depth as well. So, um, and tax bills are a little delayed because we wanted to get this information out before we sent the tax bills out.
And there, there was a lot of comments, I know, on Owen's page and some of the other ones about the trash that's going to be thrown on the side of the road. I'll tell you right now, the deputies, we'll open up a bag of trash. I got gloves in my vehicle. And if I find somebody's kitchen trash, I've charged littering and I've charged felony littering when it was massive amounts. So that's fees that we get back. So don't be throwing your trash on the side of the road.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, you know, and, and, and like with any program, are there ways around it? Yes. I mean, I'll use that kind of old saying, a lock keeps out an honest thief. I mean, so if somebody, I, I'm not going to tell you it's a foolproof system. So for the folks out there that want to point out every flaw that it might have, there are flaws, but it, it's, it's really to try to hold people accountable so that folks who just maybe aren't thinking about it or folks who, you know, it's convenient, so they're going to do it. But now if somebody kind of says, okay, you can't do this, they won't, it's really for those kind of folks. And we'll do any investigations we have to. So if folks know folks who are illegally dumping or anything like that, um, get in touch with our Public Works Department. So. Say what?
Mike's got some pictures.
Trash hotline name.
I do. I, I do. I, I got pictures of a.
Well, he was over there in his company truck unloading his air conditioner.
Yeah, took pictures of my guys now. No, I know you're right. I mean, it was a big business with a big truckload of, uh, shingles and plywood and they were just dumping them in. I asked them, where'd you get this from?
So just so that folks understand the, the amount of money that we're talking about, um, and I'm going to pull this number kind of out of thin air. So if I'm off a little bit, forgive me. Just construction demolition and bulk debris that we hauled just from the, the, the convenience sites on the mainland, so not counting Knott's Island and Corova, you're talking about a $400,000 a year bill, just the haul fee. That doesn't count what it takes to dispose of it, just to haul the trucks. So every load that we have to haul, that we don't have to haul, that goes straight to the transfer station, you don't have to double handle material. It saves us money.
So I mean, we're just doing this to look out for the taxpayer's dollars.
Exactly. I mean, it's, it's to, it's to try to put off as long as possible and increase in fees. And if fees have to be increased, it's to keep those fees as minimal as possible. Because it's not right for taxpayers to be subsidizing other folks.
The, the other aspect of that is, in the interest of, of fair competition amongst contractors, if one is leveraging dumping their trash in the county's system as a way of cost savings for him, that's not a fair competitive field. And so by holding all contractors accountable, that's, that ensures all the costs are captured and not on the backs of the taxpayers.
Correct.
And another thing about the decals is safety. I know Milton Etheridge, who was at the Shawboro site for years and years, several times, he questioned people, where are you bringing this trash from? And they threatened to physically harm him. So with the decal, if they don't have the decal and they dump the trash and are not cooperative,
You charge them with littering.
Just take the license plate number.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it doesn't mean there's automatically a confrontation. There's also some discussions happening at the staff level about surveillance, you know, at the sites so that, you know, we can start to really kind of track how much of this is going on. The attendants do a good job that we have out there, but they're one person. And when these sites get busy, they can't watch every little thing that happens. I know that as well. But, um, I said, we're going to do the best we can to cut down on the misuse of the convenience sites. On a side note, with the convenience sites, since I'm talking about them, um, we are looking at making some upgrades to some of the convenience sites. I'm going through a periodic thing of paving the convenience sites that we can to try to make it so that it's easier to get around. Once we secure land, there will be an expansion of the convenience site that's in Moyoc. And for that site, we're going to look at doing something a little different where you top load into boxes instead of having to throw things up and over and into them. So for those of us like myself who only have small children, I have nobody to help me heave something up into those boxes and it's not always safe. But there's, we can lay them out in a different way. So as we expand them, we're going to look to do some of that. So that the experience is a little better for the citizens as well.
Nothing like a good convenience site experience.
That's right. That's right. I, I spent, I spent three years in solid waste and I, it doesn't get any better.
Why, 800 call Kevin?
Right.
And, uh, we, we had, we had calls at the convenience sites in, in the past where people were nasty to the, uh, to the sadness doing it out.
All right. Moving on. Next item up tonight is new business. Item A, resolution of the Board of Commissioners requesting that the North Carolina Department of Transportation resume operation of the Knott's Island ferry. This is, uh, something you pecked away at the other night. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Stackleather.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Had, um, had interest from the board putting together a resolution. And, and I don't want to get up on too much of a soapbox because you folks might really want to as well. But it, it, um, it bothered me a couple of weeks ago. I was, I was out and about and saw another ferry running with very minimal ridership. And, and, you know, it's one thing for a community to make sacrifices during a global pandemic when that's being asked of all the communities. It is another when every single ferry in the state of North Carolina is in some form of operation, except the one here in Currituck County. And so I, um, put together a resolution as requested by the board. It, it's a little stronger worded than some of the other resolutions that we've put together about Knott's Island in the past, but I did it pretty late at night and I was pretty angry when I did it. County attorney and the clerk both, I think, helped kind of tamp it down just a little bit. It was a little more aggressive than it is in front of you tonight. But, you know, like I said, that's, that's all I've got on it. It just doesn't seem right.
All right.
If I may.
Yes, sir.
I would suggest that after Governor Roy Cooper, we put Lieutenant Governor Dan Forrest. And we'll deliver one to him Saturday morning, personally deliver it to him.
All right. Perfect.
Yes, sir.
All right. Um, so would you like to put that into a motion, sir?
Yes, I would.
I'll second it.
Want to make his motion?
Yeah, I want to add it.
Slow down. Slow down.
I make, I make a motion. We approve the resolution with the addition of Lieutenant Governor Dan Forrest.
Okay. It's, it's my district. I'm going to second it.
There, you can second it.
Thank you, sir. All right. Any further discussion on the agenda item? All in favor? Any opposed? All right. Hearing none unanimously gets sent off. Uh, item B, sole source, sole source purchase resolution for the Water Department acquisition of Camstrup metering equipment. Mr. Stackleather, it seems like we see this about once a year because it's, uh.
Yeah, basically, this is just, we, we need you to pass a, a resolution so that we can buy the same type of water meter. We don't want 15 different kinds of water meters throughout our water system. So anytime we purchase water meters, we're always going to have to do a sole source resolution. The general statute allows us to purchase from an individual company to maintain, um, you know, uh, uniformity throughout the system instead of having to go out to bid every time for different types of products. So that's basically what's in front of us, allows to buy the same type of water meter.
Okay. Any questions, comments, concerns? We'll vote for a motion.
Move for approval.
Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item C, ordinance amending section 2-99 of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances by removing the prohibition for county commissioner, ABC board member compensation.
Mr. Chairman, um, since this matter is going to directly affect me, since I currently am the commissioner associate with the ABC board, I'd, I'd request that I may recuse myself from discussions and voting on this.
No. So moved. You may allow to recuse yourself. We need to, we need to get, it's been a while since we've done one of those.
You want to entertain, a motion entertain a second and then have the board vote.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We'll see you in five?
Ten?
Two and a half. You need ten?
We'll see you after we join.
All right. Mr. McCree, I think we'll, we'll toss this to you tonight.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, in 2013, the Board of Commissioners adopted section, uh, non, 2-99 of the Code of Ordinances that provided for a county commissioner to be appointed to serve on the county ABC board. Part of that, um, ordinance provided that the county commission member would not be compensated for service on the ABC board. Uh, the board's now requested that that provision be repealed. And so what this ordinance will do is strike the prohibition on the county commissioner or member to the ABC board from receiving compensation.
Thank you. And just so everyone knows, we are, uh, compensated for other boards that we sit on. If we go to a meeting, it's just a small amount to, um, pay for our fuel to get there, I guess, in a little bit of our time. So, um, this will be no different than any other board we currently, um, sit on as commissioners.
And the members are also compensated, correct?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Any discussion from the board? We'll open the floor for a motion.
Move for approval. I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
You want to get along with it in that?
What the heck?
Come on, man.
Come on, man.
All right. Thanks, sir. Um, next item on the agenda, item D, consideration of Corolla Volunteer Fire Department request to purchase 800 megahertz radio. Mr. Stackleather.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The request before you here is for, um, the Corolla Volunteer Fire Department purchased a new piece of fire apparatus out of their auxiliary funding that they raised themselves. They need to put a, uh, radio in it. They're going to leave the radio that's in the older apparatus in it in case it needs to be used in some other form or fashion. This is basically just approval. Since it's over $5,000, the board has to sign off on that expenditure to put a radio in that truck.
All right. Any comments, questions, any concerns? Uh, so moved.
So.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Next item is, uh, item E, consideration of Lower Currituck Volunteer Fire Department request to use funds for repairs to fire apparatus.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, basically, this is a, a similar request that you've seen before. Lower Currituck has, I think it's a blown head gasket on one of their pieces of fire apparatus. They need to make a repair. They need to make a repair to that. This came up actually at, after the FEAB. They, they didn't know that it was broken until after. The other item came up at the FEAB. This one came up in between. I went ahead and put it on the agenda. It's a total of, um, $9,687 and, uh, it would be taken from the, um, apparatus replacement fund, same as the previous request that you saw a couple of weeks ago for a repair to one of their, um,
Tanks.
Tanks, the poly tank, yeah.
So, uh, if this goes over that, would we need to come back in for more money? Is that, or if it's, since it's?
You're approving the, the amount that you see here in, in front of you unless you want to take a motion to approve up to a, a different amount.
I would say, yeah. Cause, yeah, that was my next question because that's not a dream looking at it. Go into it, it's going to be a $15,000 repair probably.
Well, I did talk to the chief down there and he did specify that this was for the, when they open it up, you never know what, he said it might be a little bit more, may not be anything more, but he just wanted to let us know that they might see something else when they open it. So I said, well, depending on what that is, you need to bring that back to FEAB and manager and all that.
What I, we have a process in place.
Right.
This is in complete circumventing of the process.
Well, I, I get that, but if you got a guy, the guy at the shop, they got the motor tore apart, they have to wait two weeks for us to come back to them and then to approve a budget request. Understand that. And, and in a normal sense, that would be the case. But, I mean, how many engines have you worked on? You opened it up and it was something else entirely and way more expensive. So.
That's my point. They don't know, we don't know the extent. I mean, and, uh, the board has been very good at, we paid for, we authorized the expenditure and transferred the money to pay for the poly tank that went bad. And that was a inside deal, right, that went bad.
Right.
And, and I, there's no doubt that the FEAB would support the repair, as would the Board of Commissioners. But that, that's not what the process is.
And I don't think that if it, if they came back and said, we're looking at a 10, 20, $30,000 more increase, they wouldn't expect that. $30,000 more increase, they wouldn't expect that to be approved without going through the process. I think they're talking more like a, maybe a minor increase of maybe a couple of grand or something like that, yeah.
Yeah.
If, if.
You get into a blown motor, we're having a whole other discussion.
But, go ahead.
So I think, I think the, the point that Commissioner Beaumont is making is that this expenditure at all is outside of the normal process.
Correct.
Um, one of the reasons that, that I went ahead and put it on the agenda is I understand it and forgive me, I'm not as familiar with the internal workings as, as some of the volunteer fire departments as maybe I should be. I think that between the poly tank and this apparatus, it puts them down to frontline apparatus.
Right.
So that was the reason that I went ahead and put it on, on the agenda.
And that's what he was saying. I mean, they, this is more of an, it was.
Kind of an emergency situation.
Well, it is. I mean, we're trying to keep old apparatus.
But Commissioner Beaumont is.
Yeah, I get, I get where Paul's coming from, but.
But.
So we would ostensibly wait to have emergency meeting for a FEAB in this situation, pull you guys right together.
FEAB meets and, I mean.
Could they have emergency meetings if, if need be, like within a day or two?
We could, but all, all I'm saying is we establish a pro, we built the FEAB, this exact thing.
Right.
Anyway, I'll, I'm just throwing that out as a process.
I mean, if, if they came back in a 10th file, I mean, are we going to fight it or whatever? You know, say like, if they can have an emergency meeting to go over, you know, whatever.
All right. Uh, as if, let's say we say, uh, they can have up to $15,000, Mr. Stackleather. Is there a way to make them come back and report before they spend it to you so that we have some oversight?
I, I, I don't think there's a way to, to, to force them to come back before they, I mean, if it's, if you say that's what it's going to be and I'm going to turn around to the finance director who's not here right now, um, so we would only cut the check for that amount. I mean, so if you say this is the amount, that's all we're going to cut the check for. Now, that doesn't mean that Lower Currituck Volunteer Fire Department doesn't have, and I don't know if they do or not, but has, you know, capital reserves that they could dip into.
Go into to get.
To pay for the rest.
They don't have as much in their capital reserves as they used to.
Well, what's the process that you think we should be going through?
The process we established are that expenses over $5,000 have to be embedded in the FEAB to get their endorsement before going to the Board of Commissioners.
And so this isn't, this, uh, eight, this $9,687 hasn't been presented to them?
No.
And when's their next meeting?
Um, I have it down as September 28th, but they could call a meeting. They'd need to give the two days notice, the same as any.
That's the problem though. This is not, this is not a replacement of a major expense. This is a relatively small expense, given the size of the budget. So for me, I, I get the normal process with the tanker, for instance, that had to be repaired, coming to us to send that off to the, you know, that we just approved at our last meeting. This is a little different animal in that the engine's down. The motor's down. Let's, let's get the motor fixed, get the engine fixed, so.
$1,500, he said, it's very serious.
Which is, that's four tires. There's a couple of tires on them.
And actually, let me offer a point of clarity. That's out of their budget and the expenditure over $5,000 has to be approved by the FEAB and the Board of Commissioners. This isn't even, I, they're not competing, this is out of Lower Currituck budget, correct?
No, they're asking for the county. So this is county funding.
This is even worse than that. This is, I'm just, like I was pointing out, the process and.
Right.
Is there a provision in there for emergency meetings, for emergency? There's not?
But, I mean.
You can call a meeting.
You can call a meeting with 48 hours.
We can even do a, whatever, but.
Then, huh.
You can't, you can't, you can't do a Zoom meeting with our boards. We've got a.
I agree, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, they got to be in person, but I mean, it's just scheduling it and getting two days advertisement, same as.
Well, the thing you got to also consider is if you look down the la, next to the last paragraph, um, they got to check, it's a wet-sleeved engine, so they got to check the liners to see if there's any protrusion and if they're going to, you don't ever replace just one liner, you replace all, I assume this is a V six, I mean, a six-cylinder. And they're going to have to replace all of them, so what kind of warranty do you get with a rebuilt engine versus if they could find a remanufactured engine?
I don't think they're proposing to replace the engine, just the head gasket.
You get into.
With 104,000 miles on it.
If the le, if the liner's been leaking, that's been putting water in the base. So you got bearing issues possibly.
Yeah, and the warranty could be gone.
This is dated 8/27/08, 9/8. Have they contacted the?
And that, and that's another thing. This is not, there's not been a email to this effect to the FEAB and, and there's.
Was, was.
It, it was brought to my attention on a meeting on last, I can't remember the date now. Whenever it was brought to my attention, like I said, because this was going to be their second frontline apparatus, um, and in hindsight, in hindsight, looking back, I mean, yeah, I should have, I should have seen that the FEAB could call an emergency meeting, so I'll, I'll own that mistake for sure, so.
But I mean, it's not even been socialized. I mean, forget, there's.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Um, and reading, further reading through this, like Owen was saying, I, I get it. It seems to me that, well, they got to crack it open and see what's going on. So this estimate's not even probably realistic in any way, shape, or form.
My point is, is once they open it up, they're probably going to come back with a larger number.
It's going to be a whole other, yeah.
It's going to come to Chief Melton, whoever, then it's going to go to the FEAB because it's going to be a large expense. It's not going to come out of that shop anytime soon.
Yep. Yep. Okay.
We have rules and regulations I think we need to follow. That's to me some of our problems in the past.
I, I guess, the question I have though is, did they, did they inform Chief Melton though that this was down?
I think they might have come directly to me in this case because it, but it just so happened, it's not like they called me, it just so happened we had a joint meeting that night and they caught me outside going into a joint meeting, uh, two nights after the last FEAB. And I can't remember the date off the top of my head, but it was a joint meeting with all the fire chiefs. Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Beaumont, what do you want to do? Pause in your court.
Looking at this estimate of repair, I, I don't think that, I mean, I don't know big diesels like, you know, I would probably you do. This I think is going to grow.
Oh, it's definitely growing.
And I think at the end of the day, we should, you know, I think the county's committed to, you know, fixing it, but I think, and this is where it's been in the past, we'll overhaul a pump that really should have been thrown away in a new pump purchase.
Right.
And we try to save, you know, money.
Oh, that was my first thought. Looking at it, you got a, you got an old engine with 100,000 miles on it, which is nothing for these engines, but it's a 93, it's a 93 engine.
My recommendation is going to be, you know, bring it back to us when we know how much it's going to cost and what our options are.
So let's allow them to take to the place to get the inspection done, open it up, and then once we know the final number, tell them to bring it to the board FEAB and then let us vote on it then. So what I don't want to do is, I don't want to hinder them from bringing to the shop and letting them open it up and get the process.
Yeah, but it's not going to just, I mean, per this, it's going to Rocky Mountain. I mean, it's not, I mean, we got a couple diesel guys right in Moayak.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, Alan Bunch is, I mean, that's, he's one of, he's grown a truck. I mean, I know he's worked on everything.
Right, man. So, so we'll have plenty of time to get it for the FEAB. Yeah, but let's, let's not delay it. Let's just let them take it and get the inspection done.
So, so then I guess what I'm kind of hearing from the board is that you all want to go ahead and talk about approval for them to let the investigation occur, and once a firmer estimate comes forward, take that to the FEAB.
And let's see what's.
Follow the process.
And so they should be, and this is under, getting it over to get an inspection done and understanding what the problem is and going to cost should be under five grand. It's a thousand dollars to tow it, couple hours of technician time once they get in there, whatever, um, so then we can move forward from there. If it's recommend replace the engine, then let's, we'll replace the engine.
But that's, I would expect that before the FEAB is, we're going to send $12,000 to fix this engine, or we can buy a reman for $18,000, category one, if you want.
I agree, so let's just approve them to get it sent up there.
It's already been moved for the second.
Okay, oh, okay.
Wow.
Further discussion?
I think we've discussed. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right. Who knew that was going to be the big item tonight? Um, where are we at? Consideration, okay, this one's up for Mr. Owen, consideration of J. Owen Etheridge's request to waive text amendment application fee. This one's a little screwy. Owen, uh, in talking with the county attorney, you got here a little bit late, so I didn't get a chance to talk to you. We're going to have to ask you to, um, recuse yourself because there's a monetary implication to you if we waive the fee and then ask you to be the presenter to step on up in front of the podium and present your agenda item to us this evening. So, um, with that being said, are you comfortable with going that route?
I didn't hear, what'd you say?
Yeah. Okay, well, so he's got to ask.
Ask me to recuse.
Okay. So, thank you. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Huh? Uh, uh. So, can you, sir, if you would, state your name and address for the record, please?
Uh, BR 549, J. Owen Etheridge, 109 Evergreen Drive, Moayak, 27958.
Thanks, sir. So tell us about what's your, uh, here for this evening.
Well, we talked about this some time ago to help out one of our local businesses. And the reason I'm, I'm bringing this forward is we now know, it's been admitted several times that our UDO is a residential UDO and we use residential standards to apply to commercial opportunities. This is for an expansion of an existing business that is a major employer in Moayak, uh, and also a major contributor to the sales tax that we receive. And I'm asking that in the future, starting with this case tonight, anytime we find a part of the UDO that is stymying expansion or bringing businesses into Currituck County, the county needs to do this. This is, this should not be up to the business owners to, to point out where the county has made a mistake and then have to pay to correct. And maybe mistake is the wrong word, but where the county has got an ordinance that hinders business from coming forward, like I say, either a new business or expanding. If we don't do something like that, why do we have an economic developer? Because if you stop and think, we've lost several businesses just this year alone, 2020, because the UDO did not reflect a true look at commercial applications. It applied, like I said earlier, residential standard to it. So I respectfully ask that in the future, starting with this case, that we waive text amendments that open up the door for business to locate in Currituck County. And that will help our economic developer as he's trying to recruit businesses into Currituck County.
So are you asking to waive the application fee for this particular text amendment? Are you asking to waive the fee permit fees?
I'm saying in the future, starting with this one, waive the fee for this one. The business person should not have to pay to fix what the county's got.
So, so if a business or somebody wants to come up and amend the UDO, that you, what you're asking is they should not have to pay a fee to do that?
Yes. If it is keeping them from being able to do what they want to do, either expand a business or to locate a business in Currituck County. We've got another business that is loo, looking at the corner of Baxter Road and Carrottoke Highway, and we've talked about it, I think, at our last meeting. It cannot be developed the way they want to develop it into two businesses or three businesses, the way the ordinance is written, because it's a residential standard, not a commercial standard.
What, what kind of, kind of, what's the fee amount for something like that?
250.
250?
So, uh, those fees though, correct me if I'm wrong, are to, uh, help compensate or take care of some of the staff time initiative to bring this through the county, are they not? And typical, like, uh, a construction fee, if you come in for an application to, a building application, it's to help offset some of the costs of doing.
Yes.
Businesses in the county. Um, so in this case, I think, little bit of confusion because you're, you're asking for this is that you were going to be the one asked, bringing this package forward for, in this case, the business owner. Is that the case or is this, are you asking to fix us to waive this fee in perpetuity going forward so that any business owner that comes forward can come forward? They have to present the text change, but they also have to submit the packet?
Right.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And the reason I say that, this particular businessman had the text amendment written.
Right.
By a local attorney who is, happens to be the city attorney of Elizabeth City, so he's very familiar. You know, they're going to bear that expense of writing the text amendment, then I think to, to, like I say, clear up what we have in a UDO that stymies them or handcuffs them from being able to develop a business plan that will work on that particular piece of property, we should make them correct what the county's got wrong.
Well, so I would, I would venture this. Uh, in this case, uh, I believe he wants to go across the street, um, I think he had a trail, a, a utility trailer lot there at one time. Um, I, the UDO, um, and the land use plan are reflective of not only a previous board's thought process, but the, the people, the citizens in this county, what they want to see and develop. And if, if I recall, when you were on the board last, you guys made these changes to stop some of this stuff, to stop these, to make them pave lots at, at auto dealership, for instance, and make them look a little neater, to put privacy screening up, to clean the quarter up and do some of these things. So, um, for me personally, it, it, it says to me, we didn't necessarily, or probably board, not me, didn't get it necessarily wrong. They got it exactly how they wanted it to be. And, you know, discovering a deficiency for an individual business owner is a different animal altogether. It's, it's, because his language is to fix one little deficiency for his type of business in this case.
And we've, we're seeing those things. We had it with the automotive repair shop that wanted to high-end automotive repair shop.
Right.
Because of the way the UDO, we lost a million dollar of your business.
Right, and, and potentially, yeah. Um, yeah, that's.
But even if the fee is waived and they bring the text amendment application before us, it may not get approved anyway.
That's true.
That's true.
That's true.
It may not be, so, so.
If the $250 fee is what's preventing a, a business from moving in the county.
Well, so there is an aspect, I think you're right, Owen. There, there is an aspect of, we were talking about that auto repair guy. I talked to his mechanic, actually. He wants to open a business here. They have now split. It had more to do with that than, delusions of grandeur than it was the actual, so there were problems.
Organizationally.
Right. Internally with them, but also you are right. When we looked at LI and HI, you know, the thought process was to have this really nice building and LI and HI are designed for higher intense uses. And the board itself came together and said, okay, I think we can change that language to, to remove some of the screening and stuff because it, it's not necessary to have that because it's supposed to be ugly by design.
In this text amendment that's been submitted, the only thing that he really wants to change is the complete asphalting of the lot. It's a storage facility. It's not a sales yard. He's not going to take people over and sell them. It's to, to move inventory over on his sales yard.
Right, right. He needs remote, he needs remote storage, right?
Yeah, but right now, we're just talking about the fee piece. That's all we're talking about.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's, it's kind of getting clouded this issue.
Yeah, because we had a crabbing, local crabbing company a few years ago, if I'm not mistaken, came before us and wanted a text amendment. And they had to pay the 250, but they thought it was good enough for, I mean.
On development?
Yeah, that they decided to, I mean, I mean, we have a lot of small businesses are paying that fee to try to get tech, even the sand mining thing just recently.
Well, I guess, one of my concerns would be if, if the $250, if a business is bulking at the $250, we take that barrier away. It's holding some, and I'm going to use the term mom and pop, but ridiculously small businesses with crazy ideas who, if they're not willing to pay $250 to put an application in for a text amendment, we have the potential of overwhelming planning already.
Right, and make sure you're serious, basically.
I don't think that's a bad, I mean, 250 doesn't, that's not a whole lot of money.
What, that laser, that laser tattooing, what was that tattooing that she paid the fee? Yeah, the, remember she came in to do the?
She left off a shingle in the road.
Yeah, yeah, she paid that fee, so.
I, I, I'm not doubting that. And, and I'm saying that in the future, starting with this one, we need to look at how we can help businesses locate in the county if you want to talk about economic development.
Well, and so that's another discussion. I agree with you wholeheartedly. I'm very pro business as, as we all are, but, and I think that's, so that requires us to dig a little deeper then and understand, and maybe we do relax some standards in some of the areas. And we'll decide what type of business we want to grow more to the point and where do we relax those standards for types of industries that are going to really provide some good jobs and good tax base for us as a county. It was an interesting argument all the way around.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, we did that, I mean, like with the tipping fees with the cotton gin. That business has been here for a while. And the business, I'm not going to say the business that he's referring to, but they've been here for a while too. $250, I mean, I get it, like, and, and any sheet of paper or whatever there is on, on paper, something might be wrong, some, you know, and we look at it all the time, you know, and I don't see the 250 as, you know, the, the make or break. But I do think he has some, some valid points far as what this individual business is, you know, wanting to change where, you know, like I said, I think it's, I mean, the guy in Mayock, he was here 20 some years and, and he jumped up shop and moved to Camden because there was, when the building, whatever, there was some changes. And, you know, he got frustrated. He'd been here 20 years and, you know, spent a lot of money. I mean, I think, but I think we, the seven of us, listen to that when people come up here and.
And I agree because the $250 is, is not going to, is not going to change how we can have this discussion amendment anyway.
Right.
I mean, whether he pays the 250 fee or not.
We're still going to entertain.
We're going to discuss it. If he don't approve it, he may not like it in the EBITDA.
Right, so the, 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 the problem is the fee.
This is not a blanket approval of the text amendment.
No, this is, this is, this is just about a fee.
Mr. Chairman, I think if we approve to waive the fees, we're going to have so many people coming into this county with.
I want a petting zoo.
Yeah, right. Well, that's what's going to happen.
You want to partner up?
Yeah.
I just think fees are part of county business. To me.
It's part of doing business.
You know, it's, it's.
Now.
It's how we function.
So another point to Owen's, the whole thing is if we want to have discussion about that type of business and what does it look like, what can they do or not do? And then change, and the board itself can direct staff to come up with language to change the UDO. And that subverts this whole process. But it has opened an interesting question as to whether or not we want to change how we do business for that type of business, how they do business within this county. So that may be another point of discussion and maybe the whole thing just goes away because we decide that that is something we'd like to see changed within the UDO as a unit. But that's, that's an argument for another day. But right now, the question is, if we waive this, then it's, it's, it's free, free game for everybody and all those people that paid it before.
It's, it's not, I disagree with you. It's not free game for everybody. It's when you find something in the UDO that prevents a business from being able to expand or locate.
So in that case.
Business at the corner of Baxter and Carrottoke Highway, because of the way the ordinance is written, it's a commercial sta, I mean, a residential standard on a commercial application. And they can't develop it the way they want to do it. So you've got three businesses.
But can they do it somewhere else in the county or is it just right there?
That's where they've got the piece of property. That's where their demographic study.
So they, so they need to, but that would be another, just a zoning amendment, right? To change the zoning to allow for whatever they're trying to do there.
No, they can do it there as it's owned currently, but they will split the property the way, the way the ordinance is written.
So to, to clarify that this situation that Owen's talking about is a piece of property they want to subdivide. And in our ordinance right now, there is no differentiation between a residential subdivision and a commercial subdivision. So whenever they, because this commercial property has been part of a larger parcel that has had a residential subdivision carved out of it, they can no longer meet the standards for like a minor subdivision. And so they have to put a road into the, with a dedicated right of way into the commercial property, which eats up developable space. Now, we had a, just so the boards are aware, we had a conversation with myself, Larry Lombardi, Laurie LaCicero, a real estate agent, a developer on that situation. We talked at length about whether the county would, would talk about putting forward an amendment to change that or whether the developer would, would make more sense for a commercial entity to do that. In that case, as, as the county manager, I recommended, one, if they do it, it probably gets done faster because if the staff does it, then we have to have stakeholder meetings. And there's a lot of extra meetings that will, it's just the nature of whenever staff puts together a text amendment. And also, in full disclosure, we, we're not commercial developers. I mean, we don't know exactly how that text amendment needs to be written from a commercial development standpoint. So it probably makes more sense for an applicant who understands the situation. But that's a kind of a whole separate.
Yeah, we're not even discussing that. We're talking just about a fee.
Yeah, I mean, the fee, like, and, and I would say, Chairman Ethrich, a perfect example of a business in Mayock, and I'm friends with him, so he wouldn't mind if I said his name, Graham's Collision Center. That deal almost fell through in the county. It was very, very close to falling through.
Because of the fee or for the text amendments?
Just a lot of the stuff on the UDO for a commercial.
Yeah, but that's not a fee.
But that's not, nothing with the fee. But they were frustrated on having to.
That's what I'm saying, so.
But yeah, I mean, like I said, but I'm just using that as an example. There is some flaws in, in, in any.
Right, so we know that. So that is, that is, that was the point I was making earlier. This, we need to decide this issue. But secondly, there is a bigger discussion that Owen raised points about. And that is if our UDO is written in such a way that it hampers new expanding business, then we can have that discussion as a board with county staff.
But we've, I would argue, we've done that multiple times.
Yeah, but thanks change.
And, and I'll tell you, you know, the nuclear vessel casting facility there in Mayock.
Yep.
And I was there at their ribbon cutting. And the quote was, of everywhere they've ever done business, Currituck County was the most friendly towards what they wanted to do. You know, the county said, here's the rules. They said, we'll be happy to follow the rules. And, and they had no issues whatsoever. And, and I, and I think getting Larry actively involved with understanding with what the challenges are and making sure that, that we are business friendly, but, you know, we can't, and like you would address, we have a land use plan that the residents asked for, that, you know what, that was with their input. And. And sometimes, like you said, like even with the land use plan or, or the UDO or whatever, there is some items that we come up and, and we address. I mean, like I said, the money, we keep the money that the county spends in the county, Graham's Collision Center. They do great work. The city of Virginia Beach brings everything they have from there, and there's all those other places, to Mayock.
Okay, so I guess, no, it sounds like this text amendment will come forward, whether the fee or not. You know, I'm assuming, so.
Right, and, and I think it's important to note that we, as a board, at least since I've been here, are absolutely open to listening to everyone that has come through. If it makes sense, and we have granted a change in almost every time. I mean, we've, we've really been over backwards to do that, so, okay. So I think we beat this to death. Owen, final parting words?
I will say this. In the past, I know this happened years ago, and this is not years ago. If a commissioner put forward a text amendment for something they found, it was accepted and sent through.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, I found this. It was brought to my attention. Tried to help an existing business that wants to employ up to 50 people in this county. And that's why I brought it forward.
Right. Okay.
Keep him in Currituck.
Right.
Well, and again, we're not going to tell him, we're not going to look at the text amendment. It's just a matter of paying, who's paying for the fee.
Right.
Yeah.
Whether or not we set a precedent for that to go forward. Okay. Thank you, sir. It was a very good discussion all the way around. Any further discussion from the board? All right, we'll entertain a motion.
Before the motion?
Sure.
One question. The text amendment is this for, well, I know he said it, but I just want to clarify before we vote or anything. The text amendment is not just for this one business, which we all know what business he's talking about. This is, this business in anything, if something comes new tomorrow.
I think Owen's point was that, right.
Any text amendment from not just today or tonight, but therefore.
So this specific text, yeah, this specific text amendment is, is dealing with recreational vehicle sales parts and service dealer. So any recreational vehicle sales parts and service dealer could potentially, if, could.
This says waive text amendment application.
Yeah, this is just about the fee, right, yeah.
It's just a fee.
For that type of business?
No, any.
This is, what their request before you tonight is a, just the fee for this application.
Well, that's not what it says.
It's not what it says.
To waive fees.
That's why I asked that question.
To waive text amendment application fee for this app.
By Commissioner J. Owen Ethers.
Yeah.
So, um, does anyone know?
Makes a difference.
That, so in that case, then if a commissioner brings something forward, that would put us in a different light than anyone else if we waive the fee. So if I bring something forward, I get extraordinary treatment because I'm a commissioner instead of Joe Citizen in this case.
I think there's, there's two aspects of that. Number one, you've automatically removed the commissioner from the consideration of whatever's being brought forth.
Right.
And so, you know, if now commissioners are advocates, I.
Well, you, you know, like with the auto repair shop that wanted to come here, I, myself and Commissioner Ethers were advocates for that, for that language to change. Came to the board. We talked about it. We decided, okay, we can, we can look at that. We can change that. So then it becomes a whole thing for the entirety of the board, for the majority of the board at that time, and moves forward as a normal business practice. So I, I just, for me, it's, 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 we shouldn't be different because we brought it in. If we want to bring it in and fight for that change and get the rest of the board behind it, that is a different animal entirety. And that is representing that individual or individuals fighting for that.
And another thing, Ben, we've had UDO text amendments that were issues that the county takes care of. I mean, staff does the rewrite because.
So, so normally the way that that works, you know, we'll poll the board.
And if the majority, if a majority of the board, and I'll use the, um, um, sometime, I will use the, the one that we talked about with the HILI language. We polled a majority of the board at a work session. The majority of the board said, you know, I think this is something as a county we want to take on. And staff moves it forward because it's staff written, because it is a action of the Board of Commissioners, which is where the authority really rests. It's.
And, and I think that's appropriate.
Yeah, so if we think this text amendment would, would be appropriate for the entire county, then staff would do it and there wouldn't be any fee associated with it.
Well, I mean, if, if the, if the board felt like that this text amendment was something that the Board of Commissioners wanted to put forward.
Right.
You know, I had some, I had conversations with the board and that was not the, at, at that time, that was not the position that the board had.
Right. So, you know, basically, we're, we're asking, you know, this individual's business is out, he's outgrown where he's at. Great that it's successful. Glad that it's successful. I talked to him right when I first came on the board and subsequent times about that. And, um, and a path forward was exactly the way we're going. But all he has to do is pay the $250 fee, have his attorney come in, present the case. We like what we hear. It's done. It's, it's just that simple. It's a $250 fee. Yep, and an energy. And it is fair because we have done it in the past this exact way to every other person that's come forward that saw a deficiency or, or maybe a purported deficiency, and, and then it was, it was fixed. So the, I mean, I, Owen, you're the only one that's been here long enough to remember whether or not this has been way before for commissioners. But I don't think any of the staff can recall that happening. It's that, to, and just talking with them, that, that we got some kind of special treatment in that regard.
I'm not, I'm not asking for special treatment. I'm just asking, we need to do things to help businesses out. And this does not just apply to this one business. It's any future RV or existing RV sales business in the county. I wouldn't have not put it forward if it was just for one business.
Well, it has the potential to reach others, but, um, well, it's, it, and, and so the, the other question is, if it's, what about other service industries, right? So we're getting a little bit off topic here, but, you know, for you to put this forward for this one industry, there's other industries that may be served by this language too, to, to help them expand their business. And is there not, like, this might be a better question for you or Ben. In LI and HI, can you not do off-site storage in those places? So if, if, if this individual wanted to rent a parcel or buy a parcel within an LI or HI tract, put some fencing up and store off-site for his inventory, for his business, is that acceptable or permissible?
As I recall, outdoor storage is permitted, I believe, in those zoning districts.
In those zoning districts. So what, what we're at, what, that's actually available to him now. It's just not available to him now across the street. Right. Yeah, I agree. Right, but it's, it's, it's a much bigger issue.
Well, that UDO, I agree.
Right, yeah. All right. Yep, okay. All right, well, I think we beat this horse right slamming to the ground. So at this point, we've, we've discussed, we have a motion to yea or nay on this thing.
Mr. Chairman, I move to disapprove or?
Deny the request.
To deny the request. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
All right, one nay. All right. Does anybody need a break before we jump into the budget? All right, we'll take a brief recess and come back in five to 10. I said five to 10. Okay. I'll now call the meeting back into order. Next item on the agenda is item G 2020 dash 2021 fiscal year budget review. And for that, we have the exciting, Mr. Ben's stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we're going to go through a 10-slide PowerPoint, and I'm going to do it relatively quick because some of the stuff you've already seen.
I've seen this picture before.
Is it still, is it me on the other side of the screen?
No, making a nice scene from 1800.
No signal? Deb.
I like that. That's nice.
Claws?
Oh.
Jiggle. No jiggle, it didn't work.
Wait, wait. There we go.
All right.
All right. So this is your September 4th update. The reason I put September 4th, because I wrote it on September 4th instead of September 8th, so that's my bad.
We'll forgive you.
Thanks. But we, we will have another update in December, so that's why I put September in here as we get more data that comes in. Real quick, just as a refresher for the folks who are watching the meeting or might watch it later, the board adopted a, a budget that incorporated heavy reductions to revenues because of COVID. We've finished the traditional tourism season, so we've got some recommendations and increases for some revenues and expenditures. So just an overview of, of what we're going to do. You directed staff to study revenues, make recommendation for increases in September for positions and salaries in particular. So sales tax, we had it budgeted at $3.5 million roughly. We're comfortable taking that to $5.5 million. We don't, and you'll get, you'll see a chart later, we don't actually have sales tax for this fiscal year yet, but using occupancy tax as kind of a canary in the coal mine for sales tax, we're comfortable going back to what we originally budgeted. It may come in better than that, but I'm going to be fiscally conservative and say that we're going to take it back there, so. So, um.
Called it.
So, yep, uh, so, yeah, so I hope that every time I'm ever wrong as a county manager, it's this direction.
That's a good problem to have.
So I'll take it all day long. So occupancy tax revenue, we took it down to basically seven and a half million. We recommend taking it back up to $11 million. So with all, with those increases, we're going to recommend proposing to implement a 2% cost of living adjustment that you all talked about, reclassifying four positions and adding 15 positions, and moving forward with some capital projects that I'll hit on here in just a second. So sales tax, you can see, the blue line is, is this year, it's flat because like I said, it's about a three-month delay before we get sales tax information. But you can see, we trended ahead on sales tax even through March and April when businesses were shut down. I'm going to make a guess, but I think we probably didn't see near the retail leakage that we normally see to Virginia because people were ordering things online. And in the state of North Carolina now, we get to collect sales tax on online purchases where we didn't used to a couple of years ago, so.
Kevin, you ate out, I think, every night too, didn't you?
So, um, so, yeah, so this is sales tax. Here is occupancy tax. So, um, so, yeah, but, so this is sales tax, here is occupancy tax, um. So, um, you can, you can see the, the blue line is this year, so July came in ahead, August came in ahead, we expect September to come in ahead, October will come in ahead, I mean, um- Yeah, yeah, not, not a little bit.
No, it's gonna be a lot.
Yeah. Show me the money? There it is, so, um, so just the cost of the, of the new expenditures that we would add in, I talked a little bit about the revenues that we would add in, uh, 2% COLA is roughly half a million dollars. The firm numbers will come out, you'll have a budget, you'll have budget amendments that come to you at the next meeting, so you'll have a whole host of budget amendments if you kind of give direction to move forward with this. Uh, the salary study, um, after you implement the cost of living is about $185,000, so to do the salary study by itself is quite a bit more, but once you do a 2%, it offsets a lot of that. Um, new positions are roughly half a million dollars for half a year, so a million dollars for the whole year. Not all of that comes from general fund, and I'll break that down as we get, um, into that a little bit. And then adding, um, roughly $600,000 back into the Public Works Projects Fund. Um, I didn't get into transfer tax a whole lot here, but transfer tax is coming in quite a bit higher as well, we'll hit on that more in December. But Public Works had some maintenance, we were gonna have to defer some maintenance, this would allow us to go ahead and start working on some of those things. Um, the IFIS, which is the, if you remember from the retreat, we talked through that at the Judicial Center, and there's some other projects similar to that. So, new positions, um, I hope the colors came through okay, I tried all kinds of different combinations. The white would be general fund, the yellow are utility funds, and the red are, um, occupancy tax funds. So, you know, uh, basically, accounting technician and finance, I went back and say, a lot of the things you're gonna see here are, are strictly related to either adding new buildings or just the growth in development and population that you're seeing in Currituck County. Um, so, finance, for instance, as we add employees, as we add complicated service districts, as, as we collect more money, there's more need in finance for help, so there's an accounting technician, there's a custodian, that one is actually for the Public Safety Center, when it comes online, you'll, you'll need somebody over there. An electrician for Public Works, um, you're gonna be increasing the amount of square footage in Public Works quite a bit with the Public Safety Center. They, and to be totally honest with you, with an electrician, we can handle some work in-house that we currently are contracting out, and we have enough electrical work at this point that it would be nice, I don't know if we'll be able to recruit an electrician though, we'll just have to see how it goes with the salary that it's at. Evidence tech, sheriff lieutenant, sheriff major, um, evidence tech, as we, as our population grows, there's just more evidence that comes in and needs to be, um, codified. I think at the two, first year of the two-year budget, the lieutenant and major, the sheriff, I guess it was the chief deputy at that time, talked through both of those positions with the board. Um, the EMS positions you see there are those e-bodies, if you remember, the first year we had them in, we took them out of the first year and totally funded the Corova ambulance, so we brought that to full staff. So, these are basically, when I say e-bodies, they're floaters. So, when EMS employees call in sick or take vacation, instead of having to work somebody overtime or find a temp, you got two people you can immediately plug in. You're still gonna have to have overtime and temp, but it saves you a lot of overtime money if you have these positions, because we have so much overtime in the EMS. Um, permit officer one and planner one are directly related to the growth that you're seeing, I mean, you heard of, pretty, you had a lengthy discussion earlier about ordinance changes that you'd like to see, there's major projects and planning that they need to help with. And then permit officer, we're seeing more permits coming in than we know what to do with, which is a good problem to have, but you gotta have somebody to process it. They, both of those will be on the mainland, mhm. Uh, the lineman part-time is with the airport, so right now, he's got a group of guys who kind of cut grass, and in the winter, they do other things. This would be somebody that would still do lineman work, but you, you, instead of having one lineman at all times, you'd have a lineman that worked, you know, you'd have two on shift at some times, especially during busier times of the year. I mean, there have been times actually this year where they've had six or seven jets stacked up on the ramp, and so having, you know, and you know you're in your busy season, having that extra set of hands to fuel and do that kind of thing is, yeah, they are. Uh, seasonal helper, that is, um, with Parks and Recreation, just adding to the part-time line. So, in the water department, you've got a line maintenance mechanic and a water plant operator, um, line maintenance mechanic is distribution side, water plant operator. At some point in the next year or two, and it could be as quick as a year, our water plant on the mainland is gonna have to start operating three shifts. I mean, it, it's not gonna work to, it's gonna have to run around the clock to generate the amount of water that we have to generate for the population growth that we're seeing. So, this could let somebody get in and get familiar with it. We already do it on the Outer Banks in the summertime, and then we scale that back, but over here, you don't have that seasonal flux. They, they do, they do. Uh, so then you get into the, um, occupancy tax funded positions, a custodian that would help take care of the Maritime Museum, um, adding the extra square footage, it's another maintenance worker over there, there's just more stuff to fix, even if it's a new building, there's always repairs that need to be made. And then a Maritime Museum Manager to, to handle that facility and, um, manage it once it comes online.
So, when do you anticipate advertising these positions and starting to get these people trickled in?
So, we would, we would recommend not starting any of these till January, but the reason is that it's gonna take, I mean, it's September now, we wouldn't approve the budget amendment till the September 21st meeting. You know, let's say you advertise it for a month, you know, some would be shorter, some would be longer, but, you know, you're in the end of October, by the time you do the interview processes, January is a good date to shoot for. Now, that's for the positions, the 2% COLA salary study, what the board talked about was that that would happen, um, I believed, and Sandra's gonna get mad, I'll give you the date at the next meeting, because I've forgotten the date, but it would happen the first paycheck of the first full pay period in October. But I'll get that date at the next meeting, so that you'll know when that would be effective, I just can't remember it off the top of my head.
All right, so you're gonna start advertising for these positions sometime soon to start having them fill in January?
Correct, correct. So, we would ask for a budget amendment that would be half of the salary, but once the budget amendment is approved, we could start advertising the positions, but just with the understanding they wouldn't be able to start till January 1.
Got it.
Okay, and I guess I have questions about the sheriff lieutenant and the sheriff major.
That was a missed one.
And I don't remember, I, I, I remember discussions about it, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, I thought the major, we-
I didn't think, I thought that was zeroed.
I think, I think y'all picked both of those to the second year is what I had in my notes.
Okay, well, that's not-
How you, okay.
This year, right, that's-
No, this is the second year of the budget.
Of the budget, of the two year, oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, let me, I mean, I'll pull up the, um-
And I'd like to know, I'd like to make sure we're not gonna run into salary compression and so-and-so's not making as much as so-and-so is, and, you know, we don't get in that.
You're following that specifically with the, with the-
The sheriff's positions, correct.
So, I can tell you that the, the, from a hierarchy standpoint, the, the lieutenant, there's already lieutenant, so it would come in at the same grade, the major would come in between the lieutenant and the captain. And as far as organization of structure-
Captain and the chief deputy, I think.
Is it?
Yeah, it's higher than the captain.
I, I would like-
A little more information.
A little more information on that, please.
And let me see, um, I can get that information and then we can put it in, um, get it to the board between now and the next meeting as well.
With the 2%, are you making it retroactive to July 1?
I, I wouldn't, and I'll tell you why, and I'm just being upfront, if you all want to do something to do like that, just do a flat bonus amount for employees, because you, it, it is a lot of staff time to have to go back and calculate. If it was, everybody just worked 40 hours a week and we didn't pay any overtime, it wouldn't be complicated, but when you're talking about having to go back and calculate that 2% on top of overtime for everybody, it gets-
I think this county has done an extraordinary job keeping people employed, and I think the fact that we're coming through with the 2% COLA effective, I think is admirable. And, and we did exactly what we committed to, we're gonna look at this in September, and if the numbers came in and supported it, that we go forth with a COLA. I, I, I mean, we kept people employed that, I mean, we found things for people to do to provide value to this county, and I, and I think that was admirable.
Did we not have some discussions though to look at, like a bonus or something?
We, we did.
Go back to July 1, but not necessarily now, it would just be like a bonus in December.
Blanket, blanket.
The, the board brought that up, I mean, like I said, if you, if you, the board wants to do that, then I, I would just recommend doing it as a bonus, not a retroactive, if, if the board wants to do something.
We looked, this second year budget included that COLA on July 1, we got scared because we didn't know what's gonna happen, it's understandable, and we held off. Um, and, and to Commissioner Bell, obviously, we did keep people employed, but if we're, if we're gonna revert back to when we approved the second year budget, I think we at least need to try to make up a few of those months that they were gonna be in, the 2% COLA.
Well, like he said, that's where possibly, and, I mean, it would directly, I mean, I'm a county employee twice, you know, as a commissioner, I mean, like you said, the, the bonus would be the, I, I put that uniform on every day in April, I was on that boat, and, I mean, it was-
Brutal.
It was brutal, it was, we had some tough, and there was a, not just me, there's a lot of county employees, like, I mean, if the money's there, you got the staff, I mean, it's just like if you're a, in the private.
The whole county, all the, and that's a-
Yeah, everybody.
I think that's a better-
Yeah, I agree.
It's for everybody.
I mean, because you have some dedicated people that work, I mean, Ben would get the bonus, Ike would get the bonus, Diane would get the bonus, it'd be across the board.
Not us.
Not us.
So, we do that as a Chris, we do that as a Christmas bonus, is that what you're suggesting?
You can call it that, I mean, if, if the board's inclined to do something to recognize that it wasn't in, in effect the whole time, that's just the way I would do it from a-
Okay.
Ease of implementation standpoint.
I'm like, Selena, I kind of thought that's what we were talking about when we delayed this discussion.
So, that, that's, like I said, that's, I mean, that one's, I mean, um-
That's where I brought up the 3% and no bonus, but-
And, and so to do another percent would be about two, an extra $250,000.
That's imper, that, that stays-
Imperatority.
Let's space you with you, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, well, it stays with us too, we still gotta, we gotta meet that every year.
Gotta shake and bake. Jerry Maguire, show me the money.
So, that, that's the, I'm, I've got some more stuff on capital projects and OCTAX, but, uh, was there any other discussion on positions or COLA? If the board wants to do some kind of bonus, um-
I think, I think we're, one of them, is everybody more comfortable, is everybody comfortable, reasonably comfortable with consideration of some kind of a bonus for this guy?
Certainly, we can consider it, but I'd like to know what it's gonna cost.
Well, yeah, he's gonna have to put those numbers together for us, and maybe, and not tonight, tonight's not the night to do that, but he can, Ben can bring that back with us when he, you know, presents some ideas for, for that to us, of what he wants to do and the financial cost of that.
Paul, you're gonna get a gift card to pass the thought.
Carabas.
Carabas. All right, um, so occupancy tax projects that would be added back in, these are capital projects, uh, beach access walkovers, that is actually designing three and constructing three this year. So, we went out, we put them out to bid right as we started the year, and we had to pull back. Stabilizing the historic jail is, is, it's a big spend, it's a half a million dollar spend, but otherwise, that structure is going to collapse. So, um, but then I will say, after you stabilize it, the next step in that would be some kind of renovations to it to make it a tourist attraction from a historical visitation standpoint, very similar to the historic Jarvisburg Colored School. And the historic Corolla Village sidewalk, this is a project that's kind of been in the works for, I think, two or three years, I think we're getting to the point where we've gotten community support ironed out by and large, we figured out a lot of the right-of-ways and easements that we need.
Perfect.
So, um, I'm not gonna say it's 100% done, but I think we've got a path that will meander a little, but it gets around the ones who don't want it on their property, and it would run from the park all the way back, I want to say near Corolla Chapel.
It goes, I think it goes, terminates at the cha, at the inn, back there, yeah.
So, and with the, and for those of you that, that have been by, um, with the Maritime Museum, that's gonna be a really neat entryway into our facility through that breezeway, so. So, then, uh, in December, we'll examine transfer tax and other capital budgets to try to add back some rolling stock and other capital requests. I mean, the, the, the money may be there, I, I'm still nervous, sorry, it's what you pay me to be. Rolling stock, if we, if we wait, I don't think you have near the detrimental impact, I mean, we've got some stuff that's getting older by six months, but it's not, you know.
Other than the fire truck with the blown engine.
Yeah, so, um, so with that, uh, that's your September the 4th slash 8th budget update.
All right.
So, if, what we'll move forward with for budget amendments, just so I can kind of get a poll of the board, the 2% COLA, the, um, positions that we're on there, we'll, we'll, maybe I'll invite the sheriff to come and talk to the lieutenant and major one more time at the next meeting. And then put together a rough idea of what a Christmas bonus looks like.
Well, the salary study, right?
Salary study implementation as well, yeah, so if you go back to, to here, so salary study, new positions, and adding the money back into the Public Works project line, and, um, the OCTAX projects that we talked about.
And we're gonna pull 400 or 500 out of the school's capital projects, right? So, we can pay for that.
I, I, yeah. Yes, ma'am.
On tap for Thursday.
In the salary study, we had the discussion with the firemen and the EMS, is that part of the salary study?
It is. And like I said, the reason that the cost is quite a bit less than when we talked about just the salary study is the 2% takes care of-
The part of that.
Part of that spend.
Because I wanted to make sure they were included.
It, it is, um, it's the same group that we presented in the salary study, um, the big spends were the, the full-time fire in Corolla, I mean, because of the, the difference in hourly rate. Say it again?
In Knott's Island.
In Knott's Island, yep. And, you know, but we, I mean, we did have several other increases across other jobs. We are going ahead with phase two of the study, so, just so that the board's aware, that'll, the results will come in hopefully in December, January, so that as we run into budget, we've got those numbers again. We'll do it again the next year for the final third. And then, uh, the, the one thing that's not on here are the, the reclassifications that we've talked about over the last month or so that would be rolled in, so.
Oh, yeah, okay, we gotta get Sandra straight, right?
Yep, well, not just her, there was a couple of other minor changes that we needed to make, so.
Okay. All right, thank you, any, any more discussion?
No.
Comments, concerns? All right, thank you.
So, we'll bring the budget amendments to you all at the next meeting, um, if adopted, then we should be able to implement.
There is. What's on your mind?
We, we have a meeting scheduled for Monday, correct?
Yes.
Correct. Oh, yeah, I can bring information about the bonus if you want, that way we can have the budget amendment prepared. Yeah. Do you want me to see if the sheriff can attend that meeting as well, and knock that out at the same time?
Might as well, in for a penny, in for a pound, Paul's excited.
Okay. Clerk will help me remember to invite the sheriff. Thank you.
Text your boss. All right, uh, next item this evening is gonna be board appointments, Fire EMS Advisory Board. Who had an appointment, this is consensus, is it not?
Yes.
William Bailey? All right, who wants to reappoint Mr. Bailey?
Just as a background on that, uh, county changed, uh, policies and processes with, uh, advisory boards, so, uh, Mr. Bailey is available for, to serve another term.
Okay. Would you like to?
And, uh, yes, I will nominate Mr. Bailey to fill, uh, a role in the Fire EMS Board.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
And then following on to that, we have two vacancies on the Fire EMS Board right now, so anybody watching, we could use some help. Um, Mr. Wonder from Knott's Island, uh, tenor, tenured his resignation from the position, and then Chief Hart, he, his, uh, term had expired, so we need to backfill both those positions. So, download a form, volunteer, get your information in.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Uh, next item is consent agenda, uh, do we have any comments, questions, or concern, or any budget items in there?
Move for approval.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Uh, at this time, I'll recess the regular Board of Commissioners meeting and open a special meeting in the Tourism Development Authority. And the first item this evening is, uh, budget amendments, and let's take a second to get there. Be nice if we actually had it.
159.
Thank you.
Page 159.
That was a long way off. All right, thank you.
All right, Mr. Uh, Mr. Chairman, the, the first budget amendment is basically to carry forward, um, um, contracts that were in process, uh, they were grant contracts, you remember with the Wild Horse Fund, you all issued a grant for some repairs to the- with the Wild Horse Fund, you all issued a grant for some repairs to the, uh, horse fence, some work that they still need to do with that money, and so this basically just carries it forward to the next year.
Okay. Move to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Looks like that was it for that.
And, uh, there's, there's one other one, Mr. Chairman. It's, uh, the one for the lifeguards. This actually moves the money.
That's right.
Allows us to extend the contract.
Thank you. Uh, move to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And I need a motion to adjourn. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I'll open the special meeting of the Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District Board. We have a budget amendment this evening for that board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, uh, Commissioner Beaumont's favorite project. It's to move money to allow us to finish the odor, odor control project for the Ocean Sands Sewer Plant.
I'm closer to the plant than he is. I definitely get a little right by the back door once in a while.
So, this is, uh, basically, we've got the contract ready to let, but we have to move money out of contingency into contract services.
All right. Move to approve. Uh, Commissioner Beaumont, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Can we have a motion to adjourn? Who got that one first?
Second.
There you go. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Uh, I'll open back up the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners and move to go into closed session, um, pursuant to GS 143 dash 318 dot 1183 to consult with the attorney-client in order to preserve attorney-client privilege. With that, we gotta kick everybody out of the, thank you all for playing this evening, hanging out with us. Dr. Lutz, especially.